I think Janelle may have one. Because I know I can use Wi-Fi here. I didn't bring my computer, so I wouldn't have.
You need the Wi-Fi network. So we do not have forum?
We do not.
Do not know who's on the phone.
How can we find out who's on the phone? I'm going to call him. He's Tom is going to be on the phone. And Deborah is either going to be late or late. Late, not at all, or late and on the call.
Multiple choices.
She's out there.
Tom, if you're on the phone, can you please let us know, please?
Yes, it will begin by the time we begin. Yeah. That would be great. This is our special meeting to discuss action planning. That would be great. We're not quite up for it yet. So as soon as you call in, we can begin.
So the good thing is you can always have a discussion. You just can't take any action.
Great, thank you so much.
So.
And that might actually be a better meeting. In all seriousness.
You can still go on with the presentation. The good thing is we're all recording and it's trending. You just can't take any action, which again, we weren't intending to.
We weren't intending to take action at this. Bobby is calling in right now.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want me to make that announcement? If the person who's dialed in or connected to Zoom as 1370, if you could identify who you are, please. And you could do that in the chat. That might be Tom or Bob. Oh, okay. So do you have to?
Tom is 137302.
Yes.
296137. That's Tom Jensen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will call to order this special meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission. We now have a quorum, including one person on Zoom. We're not going to have announcements because tomorrow we have our regular planning commission meeting. And that will have a full set of announcements. But I do have one announcement to make, and that is that we said we were going to call this as a special meeting. And it's truly going to be special because we are likely going to have musical accompaniment to the meeting beginning at 7:00 PM. And we may have to speak up a little more loudly so that the recording can capture everything folks are saying. But it will certainly be a different meeting. I mean, I said I wanted us to get into the rhythm of planning. And this, we'll see what the beat is behind us. Okay. So if we can go to the first slide, Janelle. So the purpose of this meeting is to discuss and develop priorities for the action plans that we've been developing. And we'll do that today. We've gotten the input from everyone. We'll be sharing that. And at the conclusion of this meeting, we should have something that tomorrow could be, could go to the LPC for approval and to be forwarded to city council to get their input on what they view the highest priorities as being. And between us jointly, we should be able to identify the top areas to begin working on. Once we get those, we're then going to develop a work plan and establish subcommittees to identify each of those top priorities and begin working on them. Now, before we get into that, though, I realized that I think there's some groundwork that we probably need to lay so that we're all on the same page in terms of what we're doing. And also, I found that we sometimes are having discussions about, well, what's comprehensive planning? And what's this action planning? And so let's make sure we're all in agreement on that before we begin doing the action planning. So I had several questions that I want us to just quickly go over. And in a moment, then I'll be introducing our special guests who've come here tonight to talk to us in more detail about comprehensive planning. So, you know, the first big high level question is, why set priorities and develop action plans? And, you know, one quote that I saw that seemed to resonate with me, and it's from Eleanor Roosevelt. And the quote is, "It takes as much energy to wish as it does to plan." And I think many of us in our planning commission meetings, whether we're voting on something or reviewing plans against the code, often wish that things might be a little different in order to enable us to vote in ways that we think is, would be more consistent with the Lewis we want to see. And so this action planning is intended to help us identify some top areas that we can begin working on, just as we have in the past year. And, you know, a lot has gotten done through the subcommittees we've had. So, you know, one of our challenges is our agendas are usually focused on, it's the next slide, sorry. Oh, no, sorry, you don't say where you are, Janelle, sorry. Our agendas are usually focused on reviewing applications. And that takes up a lot of time and a lot of bandwidth. And so if we want to actually come to address these other issues, I think we need to set priorities and then put together our subcommittees and continue working on them. And we've got a limited bandwidth and we've got a defined budget. And so that's another reason to set priorities and to do this planning. Now, we've had, we can go to the next slide now. We've had several subcommittees this year that have been very successful. And there's annexation is just about to report out the subdivision that's gone through and is now, the revisions to the code have been made. And I think we've learned some things from those. And it's probably worth to spend at least one moment reflecting on what we've learned and how we can make sure we incorporate that as we move forward. And I'm interested in the, from the other commissioners, if there are things that I've missed in terms of learnings. One thing I think we've learned is I do think that having a subcommittee of approximately three commissioners is about the right size. It's a small enough group that you can get a lot of work done and have in-depth discussions. And another thing that I think we've learned that isn't on this slide, and Melanie, I think your subcommittee on annexation really demonstrated this. And that is the importance of reporting regularly to city council. So that city, so that when we come forward to city council with a set of recommendations to one of these subcommittees, it doesn't, it's not a complete surprise that they're not aware of kind of the directions we've been going or what we've been working on. We currently have enough commissioners, I believe, to run between two and four subcommittees concurrently. And we can talk about this more in the LPC, you know, in terms of that. But I think we've got enough for that. Now, we've also, I think, learnt that we can, that while we need consultants for some issues, on others, we don't. And I think the other thing we've seen in the subcommittees that we've run so far is that in reaching out to people, we have a lot of expertise in our community. And I think our subcommittees have been very effective in reaching out to experts to do presentations. And in some cases, having members of the subcommittee, as you did on neighborhood design, have them present to these committees. And that doesn't mean they're a committee member, but they're providing input that's of use. Then finally, I think there are a lot of things. We have to remember that we don't have to address every issue in the world. That some of these things are going to be addressed by city council. And others would be addressed by other commissions or wards. But we probably do have a responsibility to share with them things that we've seen that we want to make them aware of. So we go to the next slide. So I wanted to just say a little bit about about comprehensive planning versus action planning and where we are on each of these. And you'll see that we're kind of further along. The items in gray are things that we've completed. And the items in dark black are the steps to come. So at this point, in terms of comprehensive planning, we're at the five-year, do we call it review? Review. And we've identified five areas where, together with city council, we agreed that these were the areas that we would focus on and that where revisions or updates were needed. But this is an updating activity, not a beginning at square one activity. We've had some, we held the public workshop. We've identified the key areas for recommendations. And we've seen a first draft of those recommendations. And that has also gone to mayor and city council for discussion. And we've got feedback from them. So the next steps we're doing in this will be, we'll do, there'll be an update at our meeting tomorrow. And we will, in the future, and we have some tentative dates here, August 10th, to have a special meeting of the LPC to discuss the chapters and the exact wording. And I know several people have mentioned to me that, you know, they feeling that they haven't had enough time or enough input on the specific wording of recommendations. And so to ensure we all have time to do that, we're planning to have a special meeting, just as this meeting is a special meeting. So there's nothing else on the agenda in terms of applications, et cetera. And we'll have it in advance so people have a chance to go through, you know, with your pen, make notes and come to that meeting prepared to share edits or changes that you think should be made.
Nancy, I have a second. So the August 10th meeting is a firm date, is that correct? But the August 17th is tentative, is that going to be?
At the August 17th meeting, we'll discuss tomorrow to set that date. So I don't want to say it's a firm date until, you know, as. It could be as firm as tomorrow night. Yes, tomorrow night it may be firm. Now it's a little bit soft, okay? It's in the oven baking by tomorrow to have the cake ready, yeah. And then, once we have the public hearing, it comes back to us to review and to make final recommendations, our final recommendations that would go to city council. Of course, city council, mayor and city council then have the ability to make further changes, to have another public hearing, to have discussion, et cetera. But we will have another session to have a deep dive and a chance for people to input on this. Now, the action planning, and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves because in a moment, we'll talk more about the difference in levels between comprehensive planning and action planning. The action planning we did last year, we had several committees. And we've got one of those continuing and just about to report out. And one of those that we just started, which is the Tree Committee. July 19th and 20th, July 19th being today, 20th being our meeting tomorrow. Today, we'll discuss the ratings that you gave. Because remember, we handed out our sheet and everyone has given a ranking or sorry, rating of the importance of different issues. We'll report to you on what we've, what came back. And I'm hoping that by tomorrow, we'll be able to, again, at our meeting, approve something that would go forward to mayor and city council for them to provide their ratings. And then that would come back to us. And based on that, we would decide what subcommittees to form and actually develop work plans for these subcommittees in terms of kind of key dates or, you know, what the timeframe we think it is going to take to do some of these things. Might be changes to them later, but we'll at least have that mapped out. And I won't go through each of these other dates that kind of go out into the future in terms of how that would go through. So that is intended to give us a little bit of a shared base on why we're here, what we want to do. Now, if we look to the next slide, we've talked a bit about the relationship between the comprehensive plan and the action or work plan. The comprehensive plan is really at this kind of higher level, okay? So it will give broad recommendations. But those recommendations typically allow for the implementation to be done in a variety of ways. And how they get implemented is more something that would come into the action planning. Or it can happen outside of that, too. There's also important to remember that the LPC isn't charged with implementing or developing implementation for every item in the comprehensive plan. Because some things may concern other commissions, parks and rec, for example, in terms of a recommendation that might be concerning parks. Now, the action planning could be related to the comprehensive plan. But we also take action on things that aren't in the comprehensive plan. Changes in technology, recommended changes we made in the names and titles of staff because there were changes have been made in those in the city. And there are also just some smaller projects like cleaning up the code or reviewing some sections of the code that might not have any relationship to the comprehensive plan.
There is a, there's always some citizens that mix up the word recommendations with requirements. And they think that's required rather than just a recommendation.
Yeah.
So that comes up every time.
And this is, that's an interesting point to bring up. And I'm hoping that our speakers will kind of hit on the recommendations. And, you know, when we say the comprehensive plan has the force of law, what that means when something's at the recommendation level. And that brings us to the stars of the evening. We have two people here. And they kindly, I thought this was a good idea to have for our meeting, to bring in some expertise on comprehensive planning. And I'll introduce first David Edgell, who's the director of the Delaware Office of State Planning. And I've had the pleasure of working with Dave on the Department of Agriculture's, I always get the name of it wrong, Farm and Food Policy Advisory Board for the last, I don't know how many years. Council, 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 sorry. See, I knew I'd get it wrong, Dave. This is why we need expertise here, okay? And I loved when I looked up a description of your role. I mean, Dave is basically the head of state plan. So he knows what we need to do in terms of the state of Delaware. But the mission of the Office of State Planning and State Planning Coordination is the continuous improvement of the coordination and the effectiveness of land use decisions made by state, county, and municipal governments while building and maintaining a high quality of life in Delaware. So, you know, he doesn't, these guys aren't aiming low in terms of impact, okay? Now, joining him is Dorothy Morris. And she is also with the Delaware Office of State Planning. And she's a principal planner, and she's the circuit rider planner for Sussex County. So she's the person in Sussex County that will move between jurisdictions, et cetera, providing advice and giving us help. Over to you two.
Oh, thanks very much, and thanks for having us. Glad to be here. And first of all, I'll say, you know, this comp plan versus action plan thing, I think you're really on to something. I really like the way you're approaching this as a planning commission. Because what is not unusual to see in municipalities is where the comprehensive plan has a lot of goals and recommendations and things that must happen. But then there's no real structured plan to actually accomplish those things. And, you know, we're really working with our communities every, every year, really every month, on helping them accomplish the things they'd like to accomplish. And it's a lot easier, I think, when you're taking this sort of approach where you're among yourselves prioritizing what's going to happen. Yes, you know, making the distinction between what's in the plan versus what's actually doing the implementation items. So I really, you think you're a good path here. So, you know, comprehensive plans, so I've got some slides. You know, without knowing too much about where you were and your understanding how new, I know, Jack, you're a little bit new. But we teach a course with the University of Delaware, have for many years. And, you know, I am the director of the Office of State Planning Coordination, but I was a circuit rider planner like Dorothy for about 18 years. And previously to that, I worked for the University of Delaware writing comprehensive plans. And I've worked for the City of Dover doing planning. So, you know, I kind of, been kind of doing these training courses for a while. And we do this planning 101 course, which if you haven't taken it, it's definitely worthwhile to take. University of Delaware offers it usually in January each year. I'm one of the, you know, instructors, so I feel like I can use the slides outside of the formal course. But I have some slides that I kind of pulled from that longer presentation to just kind of give you an overview of what a comprehensive plan is. And this is one that, you know, Nancy, you mentioned that, you know, it's, you know, first of all, in Delaware, all local governments are required to have comprehensive plans, which is not the same as in all other states. But in Delaware, it's one of our main ways that the state and local governments coordinate our efforts for land use growth, infrastructure and services. And it's also, as you all know, a very important thing for each community to have a vision for its own future. So many years ago, that was required by the Delaware State Legislature. So all local governments have comprehensive plans. The comprehensive plans are prepared by the planning commission. They're approved by a city council or a county council or a commission or whatever the legislative body is in that local jurisdiction. And then they're reviewed by the state through our PLUS process and ultimately certified by the governor. And what that means is that the state of Delaware kind of, it needs all the requirements that are in the state of Dover code, which we'll go through in a minute. And that the state of Delaware agrees with the broad strokes and concepts in the plan and work with the communities to implement that plan as years go on. And we'll see, or later, if you guys are, know, plans are approved for 10 years. They're reviewed every five years, which the process should be now. They must be completely updated every 10 years. So that's kind of the framework. This slide here, the top level, is really your, you know, it's the big picture of what the comprehensive plan is. It's actually mandated, I just said that, you have to do it. But I don't think, I don't like to think that you have to do it because of something that's not a good exercise in very valuable, sizable, or your community. The lighting constitution part is, in Delaware law, these comprehensive plans that are around long enough, there have been limitations surrounding what the goal of the comprehensive plan is. As Nancy mentioned earlier, the comprehensive plans for municipalities have the force of law. No development shall occur unless it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, both the text and the maps. So it's really important what you put in that, in that plan. And it really guides, it guides the implementation through controls and recognition property. Because your zoning ordinances and your land use regulations have to be consistent with that plan and driven by that plan. So you're not just doing ordinances to the ordinances fully willing. You're doing them to implement some larger vision for your community that's in your comprehensive plan. That's, again, why it's a very important exercise to do. And, you know, the record is property, it includes our rules. I think that's where you get into your day to day, when you're doing applications, you're always dealing with your zoning ordinances and other land use controls. And that's where the law really is broken, get your particular piece of property that will occur on that property. You know, the bottom half of the slide here, you know, in the vision for the future, your plan really, it's updated every 10 years. But most communities look, you know, maybe even a little further than that and say, what do we want to be in 10 years, in 15 years, in 20 years? And how do we want to achieve that, that's what your, what's your vision is. The all encompassing part is really, you know, the plan, you know, most obviously affects your land use, your future land use map, zoning works, and things like that. But it includes so much more, which we'll see in a minute. And again, you mentioned it, Nancy, where some of the things that are in the plan are really the role of other parts of the city of Lewis government, or the public works, or the parks department, or, you know, it could be, you know, estate agencies, you know, land use or environmental issues, those type of things. But it is all encompassing in that way. Long range, we mentioned that. And physical, you know, you're really, at the end of the day, looking, you know, primarily at the land use, the future land use, and everything that goes along with it. Because everything that happens in town is built on a piece of property or exists on a piece of property, or is in the physical environment, natural environment in some way, the natural environment, built environment, how they work together. And that is really what you should think about with the comprehensive plan. And the bottom two little boxes there, you know, guys, your development is very clear. If someone's going to develop something in the town of Lewis, City of Lewis, excuse me.
Please.
You know, the comprehensive plan is a really good place to start, to find out what the community's vision is, what they'd like to see in different areas, what the land use is, regulations are likely to be. And it really guides your actions as planning a vision moving forward. So the first things, if you have a plan or a project, you know, how does it fit with the comprehensive plan? And it should guide the council as well, in their decisions as time goes on. And the ongoing process part is just what we're doing here tonight. You know, you're five years in, you want to take a critical look at it. Planning never really stops. And the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan, when it gets adopted, it's, you know, it's a document at, at, at that point in time. But it doesn't mean it can never be changed, and it's really an ongoing process because my co-teacher in this course likes to say, you know, who, who here thinks Delaware is the same as it was five years ago?
Yeah.
You know, two years ago, one year ago. Things are always changing, you're always reacting to new, new, new inputs, new, new projects, new, new environmental conditions, new, new economic conditions. So it's an ongoing process. So that's, you go to the next slide, I think I have. This is, um, from kind of a summary of the Delaware, some of the Delaware code requirements, just shows you what is in the comprehensive plan. And to start with, all municipalities, uh, no matter their size, have a whole list of position statements. So it's the idea that the community looks at population, housing growth, expansion of boundaries, adjacent areas, those are kind of your annexation types of issues. Uh, redevelopment, that's the redevelopment of the existing community, uh, the community character, however you define it, land use. Community developments, the key infrastructure are often things where you're looking at making sure everything is adequate in your community. And the important part here is, you know, in your planning process, you have to make a position about those items. You know, what is your position about population, housing growths? There's the towns, we've got towns in Delaware that are, you know, their position is, we don't want any more growth or town, we're not annexing anything, we're not going to, we're not going to allow any new developments for as much as we can, keep everything the same as, as it was. Uh, we've got other communities that are willing to become the next trophones. And the position is, we want to have every single new house in this part of our county that happened in our town, because we want the economic growth. And you have to, as a community, come up with what your position is on where you are on that spectrum. You know, so that's, you know, all those things are examples of, of, of where you actually are, are to come up with some, some position to say. All communities have to demonstrate ordination, your state county and the municipalities, it's also very important. Because, um, if you haven't noticed, though, I think, I think we're very unique in Delaware, I'm very proud of, of that. And one of the ways where we're unique is that, um, the state government of Delaware provides a lot of the infrastructure and services that are usually provided by larger counties or municipalities in other states. We have a structure that's a little bit different in Delaware, because we're so small. And one of the real missions of our, our office and our whole organization here is to make sure that we're coordinated well with the local governments, with their plans. Which is what the state agency is doing regarding, you know, transportation's a big one, public safety's a big one, environment. Uh, other things that's had as a state function. So we're trying to make sure, as you're developing your plan, you're coordinating with those other, other agencies uh, in the state, uh, you're coordinating with the county that's surrounding you. So you're in Sussex County, and as you know, where it's current all around in Sussex County, so be aware of that. Uh, and also other municipalities, which truthfully, I mean, I mentioned Oklahoma's somewhat close, but you're not one of the, you're not the candidate in Wyoming example, where they just put it up next to one another, so that's. And Dorothy, uh, really, you know, one of her main roles day-to-day is she's your liaison uh, to help you as you're in this process. We really, we like to, if you'd like to engage with some of the state agencies or county or whatever, we need to help facilitate that interaction, to make sure you're getting in touch with the right department, the right person, the right division. Um, you know, and if we're, and if there are issues that involve several agencies, we want to think are almost as, we help sort of coordinate that, that effort. So, uh, so we're a resource, uh, we're a resource for the city. Um, and the last thing on this slide, I just mentioned that, you know, when your comp plan is, is, is being done, it's really time to check your miss with boundary, uh, make sure it's accurate. You know, I'm saying there's not. I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's.
I just thought of this.
Yeah, so we, we just give that stuff. It's not such a sure thing in every community, so we make sure to check. So we go to the next slide, there's the other part of this, which is, um, from this value of over two thousand population, which Lewis is. Matter of fact, I just checked in 2020, I believe it was three thousand and three hundred or something. So that's a, that's a pretty big, I mean, it's supposed to grow. Uh, but you have a whole other set of, uh, kind of sections, you know, where there's policy statements, goals, and planning requirements, and your plan is structured in this way. Where there's other sections, you know, they involve more than just positions on, there's more information associated with them, actually policy statements and goals for these, these different elements. And, you know, land use and transportation are pretty obvious ones, economic development is certainly touched on. Affordable housing and community facilities, uh, you know, are, are addressed, and the space recreation center varies, community design, water restore, store culture resources, annexation. And, you know, interestingly, uh, the, the other elements part is in there, and if your community feels like there's another element that is not on that list that's beneficial to your community, it could certainly add to your comprehensive plan. We just, uh, yesterday reviewed the final version of Newcastle County's comprehensive plan. And their county council, by code dictated that the planning office had three elements, it was social, social justice.
Yes.
Uh, climate resiliency. And there was a. Right? Environmental, social justice, climate resiliency, and a third, there was a third one, which I remember by the. I thought that was really forward-thinking of their, of their, of their community and their council and their, and their, their planning staff, they engage with the community. And they work on those issues part of the comprehensive planning process. And, you know, the last one out there, the source park protection, Lewis has a source park protection ordinance. Uh, it has also in the Delaware code, you have to have that for two thousand, Lewis has that. So we're all there, and we've got bells and bells and things like that. Should we talk about that? So for the next slide, um, I was going to finish, I'll just finish up real quick, and then I'll just answer a couple of other things I heard you bring up. Uh, but, you know, the, the whole review and update cycle, it must be reviewed every five years, I know you're in that process. Must be updated every ten years, and there can be amendments to the plan that happen in between those times. Because again, nothing is static, we do things that come up. And if your plan needs to be amended for whatever reason, at any time, the city could propose a comprehensive plan amendment. Uh, they're reviewed through PLUS, and, you know, there's a process for, for doing that. Um, you know, we don't like the amendments to be like every month. You know, I mean, you really should, it's a long-range planning document, you should stick to it, uh, you know, for a year, two years, three years. Uh, if you're admitting your plan very frequently, there's probably something wrong with your plan, you can rethink it. But, you know, every year is, you know, we like to say, maybe once a year, if you have a number of amendments, you can pack them up and send them through. Or from time to time when, you know, when they come up, which, again, big things come up with our amendments all, all the time and, and certainly fine. You go to the next slide, and then the table talks about what the difference of things are. We'll leave you with this, so you can. The, uh, so, let's start with the five-year review, and then where I think you're going with this, from what I'm hearing. Um, five-year review can be as simple as, you know, your municipality has been using the plan. Uh, you know, doing annual reports every year. At the five-year mark, you can have a plan or a color agenda, uh, at the planning commission, and at the council. And at that time, the council and planning commission can decide, the plan is perfectly fine. We have no changes, it's working well for us, we've got five more years to implement this, we're halfway through, we'd like to keep it just as it is. And if that's the case, have that meeting, make it a public meeting, take a public comment, and after, after all that, council votes, we're going to keep it, uh, send us a letter, the city voted, and that's, you're good to go, five more years. Um, where I think you're going with this is you've had a committee, and you've taken a look at the plan, and you've got some areas where you want to make a few changes. And that is fine, uh, those changes are, um, planned amendments. Anytime you make a change in the tax or the maps, we'll vote, it's a planned amendment. And, again, they can happen anytime, and they could certainly happen in a package that's a five-year mark. And, um, if that's the case, send it through the previous, the same process, it sounded like if you've got five, I would package them up into one, you know, package of things, or maybe it's one document that includes all five things. Go through that process, and then you send it through PLUS for review. Uh, once it's reviewed, we'll write you a letter, and you can adopt it, and that would be your, your five-year amendment. And we've had, um, a couple of plan amendments lately. You know, sometimes even if they're relatively small in nature, it's no big deal to kind of put four, five pages into your document of the plan, and you can make five changes. We've had some communities, which I don't really name them, that have been taking five-year work to kind of rewrite old sections and add new data, and, you know, update things that have been accomplished in the text. At that point, you know, maybe it's a better idea to kind of republish the document, say, this is our five-year update, you know, comprehensive plan, and then it's, you know, it's not going to be a separate thing. So I don't worry if you're going to fall on that, but I just keep in mind, uh, that. There could also be, Janelle's going to.
Janelle, do you have a comment on that?
So we're actually doing kind of like an addendum.
Yeah.
Because, um, both council and the commission have identified five chapters they want to take a, a review. So the rest of it's staying the same, and we're just going to be submitting, um, a several-page addendum on those chapters with some updated information and new recommendations.
Yeah. And we, we, we had a, a joint workshop between Mayor and City Council and the LPC to look through the whole, to look across the whole document and identify what were the, what were the chapters or areas that we thought some kind of update was needed, and we came up with, with five, and then those are the five that we've been working on. Jackie?
So what's the difference between an addendum and an amendment?
Well, I think it's just how it's acted.
Yes, so we're not, we're not, so the comp plan stays the same, but what we're going to do is do like an addition, an addendum to the plan, saying, hey, this is our, what we did in the five-year review. So we're not going to rewrite the entire plan, we're just going to go say, hey, these five chapters got done in the five-year review. And send that, and that would be one amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
So we're doing an, an addendum as an amendment.
That sounds good.
Should we just call it an amendment then? I mean, does that fit in? I don't know how an addendum fits in there.
It's, it's going to be an amendment, and the format takes is a piece of, you know, several pages, you can add it to the end of the plan. So you know you have to read the plan, you also have to read the pages that are attached to it. So that's the format, that works well. Uh, I'm just saying, as long as it's clear and easy to see what was changed in that five-year mark.
Well, if you're hostile for a community, if, and they're five, coming up on a five-year, um, um, cycle, if you will, it would be hostile for that community to, uh, say, you know what, we don't want to do an amendment, but actually do our ten-year review at this time and reset the clock.
I was getting to that, because absolutely yes.
Okay.
That's where I was going, because, you know, and some communities that go so far, like the changing parts of their plan at that five-year. And frankly, sometimes it's like there's a, you've got a new mayor, you've got a new council, and, you know, you've got towns, and, you know, a new group comes in, so we don't like this plan, all we want to do is like.
Right.
Uh, we've had some towns that are just making so many changes, so much work, it's like, you know, why don't you just do a little bit more, change the maps, and we call it the ten-year update, and we reset the clock, and you have ten more years. You know, it doesn't sound like you're going that direction, which is absolutely good. And, and we, when we see, I, I thought, I'll name a name, you know, New York. This, this past year, they sent one in that to me, when I saw it, you know, we called them, like, look, are you sure you don't want to just do a couple of extra steps? And call it a ten-year, and you did so much work as a community on this plan. If you want to look it up, we got it on our website, and it's, you know, it's really pretty, pretty amazing what they did. They're like, oh no, no, we, we want to do more at our, at our ten years, you just want this to be our five-year, we're going to do a whole bigger thing. Uh, but, but yeah, so, so it's really, really bearish, but I just wanted to, to kind of point out that there are some, some options. And there are times when, um, you know, the, the code says the plan must be at least reviewed every five years. And so, uh, we've had communities that at year three or year four, they do a big amendment. You know, if something comes up, they do a big amendment, you know, maybe several parts of the land use were changed, it's affecting the plan, because they've got a different type of development coming in, we can consider that the, the review, because at, at least five years, they have reviewed things, except we want to make a change. So we've got a flexible plan.
Yeah.
You know, I think you're, you're doing that.
I have another question.
Yes.
Uh, you mentioned, I believe, one of the requirements, uh, that there need to be a demonstrated coordination between state, county, and the municipal houses. Um, what is the test for, uh, demonstrated coordination?
We typically look for, you know, as you're doing the plan, you know, there will be a series of public workshops and meetings, interactions between the staff and consultants and planning efficient. Uh, typically, you will engage with the county planning department at some stage in, in that process, typically you will engage with some, with some state agencies at some stage in that process. The, uh, we will look for a, a, an email or a, a letter from the county government, you know, that says that they reviewed the plan and have no, no objections to the plan or have, have any recommendations. So, you know, it should be a process by which there's a built-in way to, uh, to have that interaction developed in the plan. And then they review the plan after, Janelle, after experience with that.
Yeah, so typically what we do is, is when we get a, like a draft together, we typically send it to the adjacent towns, and then we'd send it to the county to get their feedback to make sure. Um, you know, so they, they, and sometimes, I can tell you in previous, I've read a lot of towns and other jurisdictions comp plans, and some, and usually we don't have any comments on everybody else's, it's just we're taking a look. And so typically, we, once we get a draft together, we typically send it out going, hey, this is what we're looking to do, let us know if you have any comments. Um, and you know, and again, they're always invited because we're open to the public, we try to notify as many people as we can about public workshops and public hearings, but typically they're busy doing their stuff, but we do make, reach out with, uh, the update.
And i- in our current process, where do we stand on that?
So in the current process, um, as soon as we get a draft, and it, it's good with, um, the planning commission, then we'll send that to neighboring towns in the county, um, for their consideration.
Have you gotten any feedback ever from a particular Sussex County?
I wasn't here when the city adopted, um, Lewis's, I remember reading Lewis's at Sussex County. Um, and I think it was very generic comments, I, I mean, I don't think we had at the county at the time, any significant comments.
So the demonstrated coordination, i- is that accomplished at the time of the comp plan being prepared and submitted, or is that an ongoing dialogue as plans are hatched and, you know, development plans are created?
So typically, what the towns and the counties have done is, once we get some type of draft, and, and a pretty decent draft, we'll send it to them, because we don't want to, again, some of the plans and some of the, they can be hundreds of pages long. Um, and, you know, sometimes if we know we're looking at, like, so if we're pro-proposing something in the county, um, in the county area that could impact the county, we'd probably give them a call going, hey, Jamie, what do you think about this? Or, you know, maybe sometimes Jamie would call us and do that, but it's typically, we're giving them the draft document and making them aware of, hey, we're looking at certain things, um, and giving them the opportunity to provide feedback. And that's typically what, what we do.
You know, I would say it's not wrong in, in your ten-year update, you know, you're going to be having obviously some planning, some new discussions about things that happen around town boundary, annexation, and with adjacent land use. And it's certainly not wrong to include the county in some of your meetings, some of your workshops to talk about growth that's occurring in those areas where the county's plans are versus what the town, city's plans are, and how they might interact. And that's all examples of coordination. So, so again, if we're going to look for a letter or an email from Sussex County Planning that says, you know, we're reading this plan, you know, that would be this kind of, that's, that's the proof. But the real process, it can be much more than that, it should be. You know, so, um, and I know everybody's busy, you know, Sussex County, they've got so much going on, you know, they, they don't have time to come to every meeting. But, uh, you know, if there are issues, you know, I think it's worth making the effort to, to interact with them. Sure they would do the same for you if something was going on in the city that affected the gathering church, so.
And just to be clear, because there's been, I think, some confusion over this, our ten-year plan is going to, it will be due in twenty twenty-seven. So, uh, I know some people thought, because we originally had, uh, had drafted the first draft of the plan we have right near in twen- in twenty fifteen, that it was twenty twenty-five, it's twenty twenty-seven, so.
All right, just a simple question here, on the second item, about content examples, why is something new such as triple D?
D D means downtown development districts, that's a program that we have, say. D D means downtown development districts. Uh, that's a program that we have, they run through our office that design these downtown areas and there's development incentives for redevelopment in those areas. And so for example, uh, some of our communities have been involved in that program, they've built a plan for that area and they amended their plan to include their downtown plan. So any kind of a plan, you know, oftentimes when you do your conference plan, you'll have recommendations. You know, we need to do a study about, about the flood plain. We need to do a study about this corridor. We, and you know, you pay consultants to do that study, then that study is not in your plan to make it a part of your conference plan. There are real benefits to doing that purely as they involve, I'm thinking of, of transportation types of improvements where the DelDOTs, you don't have an NPO here, but DelDOT, you know, really prioritizes projects in a different way when they're in a comprehensive plan. It, it indicates that that is, uh, that is a project local government has endorsed and that the state has certified. Therefore, more likely to get funded and prioritize in a different way. Uh, the NPOs in the other counties use that as a way to adjust their priorities as well. So um, you know, we're just meeting with DelDOT about a program today for transportation improvement districts where, you know, if you're going to have one of those, they require you to put it in the comprehensive plan because you know what, it's got the force of law. And the development can occur except as in the price of that plan. So it gives it more validity that the local government has adopted it and that the state is certified and that they can say, we're, that we're doing this program and it's immediate coordination. And um, which brings me to what I was going to mention is force of law. Sounds scary.
Yeah.
It sounds, and, and you know, just a little bit of trivia, um, the, the, the sections of the Delaware code that were written for county planning uh, were written in the nineteen eighties and the sections written for the municipal plan were written in the nineteen nineties and they're different, quite different. Um, so none of this applies to counties that have their own zone slides. Uh, but the, the, the county part is really the map or map series has the force of law. So there's really a kind of zoning, the land use types of things, whereas municipal section reads text and the maps have the force of law. So the two have to be read together. You know, you can't separate the two, read the two together. The other thing I would say is that be careful, keep the text of the plan at high enough level that you're not being so specific in it, that you're binding the city to doing very specific things that you may or may not be able to possible at the time that you're writing that plan. And I, I'll, I'll give you an example, class example, this was with the court. It was a beach town that, you know, they had a commercial district in this beach town and they were concerned about, you know, how big the bill, the commercial buildings would be, or overshadow the beach and other, other, other things. They wrote a very specific thing in their comp plan. They said, you know, those structures in this, in this uh, commercial district shall be over, I don't remember the number of feet, but thirty-five feet high. They picked the number and they said, that shall be the way it is, the force of law. You know, haha, we got you. Well, turns out with the flood plain and all other kinds of problems, you know, that number was the wrong number. You know, because the land slopes and the finished floor elevation, the way you measured it, I, that was the wrong number. Uh, you know, because you couldn't build anything in that district with that number, uh, whatever it was. So, so you know, what's more appropriate way to say that is, we would like to develop regulations in the commercial district and make sure the scale of the course of structures are in harmony with the surrounding area, don't overshadow the beach or the bay or whatever it happened to be. And then it's a technical work of drafting the ordinance to figure out the technical details of what's the finish floor, what's the base, and you know, how high can we go with B and the all criteria. So that's not a, my example I give. Uh, you know, don't lock yourself in type thing.
Is that, is that kind of, uh, I'll call that an edit, something, it, just like the way you described that. Is that something that in the review of the uh, comp plan, that the staff members, staff at the state level would have called and agreed back to the staff?
First of all, but not, we would, we respect what the local government said to us in, in, in a way that we're not going to probably second guess something like that in a comprehensive plan if the community was well-known, they're in there. We will, you know, Dorothy will be working with you as, as, as you do this. I'm always available. More, more money, we might say, hey, we might want to take it out of that number or do it that, because we can, we can coach. But we're not going to tell you, you can do it. Um, you know, if it conflicted with, the exception would be if it conflicted with the state level regulation. Uh, you know, if that push to your plan is directly in conflict with the number of state code or statute or, or regulation, you would definitely get that comment back from the process that the comprehensive plan says this. However, this state regulation was from that or wherever you require you change your land. So, so there's that, but I would, I would not count on us to be peripherated, patchy. So it's something that's uh, you know, we're, we're a resource, but uh, you know, just, just be careful and think about that as your community, as your, think the way you broke it down with your action steps versus your uh, comp plan, you know, I think you should be very mindful of that, where it's, you know, why you want to put some of that more detailed stuff in the action steps, maybe if you're still get your, your commission and your council flexibility to adjust, make sure it's all actually proper, first lock yourself in the plan stage. So, yes.
Go ahead. I've been thinking a lot about this. We have, we have a situation here in Lewis, long ago, where you know, where, where this, this commission voted against the development to uh, rent a town. And uh, and then ultimately, the city council prefers that. And uh, recently, you know. The county.
Coral Lakes.
Coral Lakes. Uh, yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. And this, this, so my question is a little complex, but bear with me, because I think it's important. And it is this, because I've, I've written, I've worked both in EPA and then I, then I wrote federal laws for, for a number of years. But, and, and I really agree with your comment that you need to give agencies, in this case, the city, the, the, and, and the experts, the flexibility to be able to make the decisions, the experts, in this case, Janelle and others. The, the uh, flexibility to be able to make those decisions about thirty-five feet, well, that's not the right number. So, you know, and they have the expertise, not us sitting around here deciding, oh, like thirty-five feet, you know, so. So I, I definitely agree with that. But this is, this is my point though, and this is the, this is what I love just your advice on, is that, you know, when, when the um, the, from, from what I read, I wasn't there, but the uh, when the, the coral
Lakes.
Coral Lakes, thank you, Joe, was, was um, uh, approved. They were subject to a, a long lecture by the lawyers saying, well, they, they complied with the uh, with the comprehensive plan and with the ordinance. And uh, and so therefore it's done and there, and there's no way out. We, we got a similar lecture from our lawyers. Now, the good lawyers, I, I, I think they.
And the zoning was correct.
The zoning was correct. The zoning was correct. And uh, and uh, so this, this is the, this is what I lay awake at night thinking about. And this is what it is, and it is this. And when we wrote um, some of our bedrock environmental laws, we built into that the flexibility for the agency. Now, this was just overturned by this report, I forget. But we wrote into it the flexibility for the agency to make course adjustments and to say, no, if, 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 if all of a sudden we're in a situation where we have cities that are suffering from uh, extreme air pollution or, or water pollution, um, we can adjust course. We aren't going to be locked in by statutes that are ten or twelve or twenty years old. If we do a comprehensive plan and then we have ordinances that are now ten years old, then we have lawyers going, see, well, you guys did that ten years ago. And you have ordinances that are locked in there and we have no ability for our electeds to make a, a choice saying, well, no, there were already a thousand homes in Robinsonville Road that were just approved. We now have a different situation. And, you know, and this little country road, new road that, you know, was going to have nine hundred or more than that now. Uh, homes. Anyway, my point though is that, my question is this. How do we build in the flexibility for us as a, as a commission to make a recommendation, the decision-making body? Is the city council to adjust course this? You know, and, and to give them the decision-making authority. Then we could, of course, kind of elect people that have the backbone to do it. But, but to, to have the flexibility to make those decisions.
The next couple of slides.
You have slides?
I do.
You wanted us to take it, Janelle? I'll, I'll tell you what I think it needs to, if I'm wrong. I'm, I, I think. And, and I was thinking about this with the, with the one you mentioned in Sussex County, maybe for several years, you know, your, your, your comp plan is your vision. It's kept current, it's always changing and it's done more recently. If your ordinances are not, you need a flexibility or meeting the needs of the current times, the ordinances also need changers to match. You know, so that is an important exercise. And maybe you're going through with some of these, I, I know your subdivision ordinance was just the topic of things. You know, if, you know, and that's, the lawyers are absolutely correct, you know, if it applies to the comp plan and the ordinances, you know, it's, it, it had, you know, that is legally binding. So if your ordinances are not providing the results that you expect through your planning process, the ordinances are what needs to be changed, I think, to either provide more flexibility or comply with discretion to evaluate the different situations or to require better design or whatever it may be. Janelle, I don't know if you're going to say something totally different or result in a trial.
So typically what I say is a zoning code should be a living, breathing document. It, it should, it needs to be constantly reviewed and updated. Not maybe like you're redoing it every year, but you need to be taking a look at parts constantly because, you know, if, if you don't touch your zoning code for ten, fifteen years, you've got things that no longer exist for uses. You've got things that may no longer match what the vision is for the plan. So to me, it's, a zoning code is something that you're constantly taking a look at. You might, you might make a couple of amendments every year. They could be small, they could be medium sized, like with the subdivision code, it's a large thing. But you always want to take a look at something and kind of make sure, okay, is that then matching and doing what we're hoping it to do?
Yeah. Another example is if, if you don't have the word of adjustment, but if your word of adjustment's saying a lot of variances, you know, that's an indication that, hey, maybe the code is not really addressing the needs of, of, of today. And there's a step in the planning process that wasn't in my slides, but I'll mention it because I believe Lewis did this, I think, pretty sure. The comprehensive zoning? Yeah, and so, yeah, every time you do a comprehensive plan, your ten-year, you're obligated within eighteen months to bring all the zoning into the community up to what the new future land use is. And I would argue that eighteen months is too long.
Yeah.
That you should probably do it concurrently, uh, because there's no gap in time because you're in a real bad situation. Your comp plan says residential and your zoning says commercial and in that eighteen months, someone comes in with a shopping mall.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, it, it, that's not going to work out very well for anybody. I'm not sure how that will turn out. So. So, so that's uh, just another, another step. And again, part of that step that's your comp plan stage could be, we're going to comprehensive zoning if things need to change. And also, do we have the right zoning districts? Do we have the right zoning regulations? Do we have the right, you know, design flexibility, discretion for, for, for different things built in there? So that is another step. Yes.
Um, question about annexation.
Yes.
Uh, right now, it's basically by imitation only. Somebody wants to annex into your town. My brother lives in suburban Omaha, Nebraska. He's always sending me articles about Omaha beating communities out here. And it's like, they have no say whatsoever, Omaha. It's just growing into the farmland and cattle ranches and stuff like this. I mean, which.
Different state.
Different state, different rules and regulations, you know, and we are here unable to annex our wealth fields which are bound out in the county, with the school district, high school in between, and we can't get them.
Well, a couple, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, you're right, essentially. Uh, the uh, annexation laws in Delaware have to be contained, so it has to be touching certain property between the two. You got to get the property metal before you get to the one on the other side. That's, you go across a waterway or a road right away, but you have to either cross the street or, or accidentally touching to, to, to make that. So that's true. Uh, the ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of annexation, we see all the annexations through land services from all the communities in Delaware. You've had that for your fifteen years that come through, um, are offices from all towns. Um, yeah, they're, they're, it's typically ninety-nine percent is where the property owner desires to be in town and make an application or petition or whatever charter says to concern with the next community. There are, I mean, I'm just going to tell you, there, there are chart, and so every town or city in Delaware has this charter, which is granted by the legislature, which is basically your constitution. It's how your form of government, it's how everything works, it's how things function. Annexation is built into your charter and each charter is different for fifty-seven towns, fifty-seven different versions of annexation. Uh, some of those versions of annexation allow, uh, what I would call a hostile annexation, which would enable the city council to actually go out and do what Omaha, Nebraska does, and say, want to take this property, remove these properties in and start the process on their own and have their own special elections to do that. Uh, I am not aware, and I've been working in this field for twenty-five years, I'm not aware of one that's happened in that way.
I don't know if it's allowed in the state.
It is, it is, it is technically allowed. There's a number of charters that have that in there.
It was a matter of the, of the legislature being petitioned by the municipal to include it after they had the original charter? Because I believe the state constitution states very clearly that uh, hostile annexations are not allowed.
You may, you may know more than I do. I just know that there's charters that have a procedure in there for what I would consider to be a hostile annexation where they just, they take the territory, they start, they start the process and, and have a special election and all those types of things. So, uh, again, I'm not aware of it being done, but, but it does, you know, it's in there. So I, I think that we ask, you know, a lot of towns have issues where they've got properties along road. They maybe have ten properties along road, five are in town, five are not in town and they're not consistent. You know, there's two properties, there's one property. You know, we've had communities where, where that have gone, actually gone and solicited those, one of those proprietors who are not even trying to give them.
A little incentive.
They didn't come in, they can, you know, appropriate the taxes or provide them with water service or sewer service. Really make an effort. So that's been successful. Uh, we've had a lot, I've known whole subdivisions to come in, you know, and, and again, a hundred few divisions, subdivision, they come into town, um, you know, to get sewer. They, they all need sewer.
Yes.
And the deal is, if you want to come to town, we'll give you sewer or give you water. And so there's, there's things like that that have been done. Uh, but, but you're right, it's kind of a parcel by parcel situation, or your wealth fields are a particular issue.
Yeah, that's been, that's been a thorn in the side for a while.
High school, that'd be great.
Yeah. Now, high school, you would have to have your comprehensive plan first and you have to have the height of the, the school district.
Yeah.
Desire to want to come in and get applications.
Now, I, I know this is, this is such an interesting topic and I have a feeling you're going to be invited back again, both of you. So, um, but I know we, we do want to get the action plan done tonight. So if there are any final questions, we could entertain one more. Aside from that, I think it's time to give a gigantic thank you to, to Dave and to Dorothy.
For exciting, we'll look forward to your plan, plan review.
Right.
It's just going to be an amendment, it's written as an addendum.
You got it.
Alright.
And, and I, I'll give a final plug for the Planning 101 course, which I took when I first came on to the planning commission. So I don't know when the next offering is going to be, but we'll be sure to circulate it because we have quite a few new members.
January.
Yeah.
There's, there's a, there's a 102, which does deals with, I think, some land use law. And there's also 103, which is for land use administration and design. So it's really a great series and I think as planning commissioners, you can learn a lot by going through. You know, there's three or four of them that are, are the base.
Are they all online?
They're not all, you know what?
It's a schedule.
They're doing, they're doing them by Zoom now.
Yeah.
Uh, so it used to be you ever go to Party Center in Dover and it would be the Party Center.
Yeah, coffee and donuts, it's the best part.
Yeah, yeah. In mid-June of the last two years, I don't like as an instructor as much as I can see everybody answering questions, but I bet it's really been, right, more.
I, I identified, if, it wasn't recorded, I don't see why they couldn't have a future. Yeah.
So we will, we will see when we get more in person next year, see you there in person.
Great. Great.
Just like you say, as you get into the process of anything you have questions on at the state level, let Janelle know, give me a call directly and I'll get to, I may not be able to answer questions, but I can change you, I can find a person again.
We've got your name and number now, Dorothy. I, I know Janelle already had it, but now we're familiar with you too. So, thank you. Janelle has put together some examples of what a recommendation might be in the comprehensive plan versus what we might be looking at in terms of action planning. And so our plan is to go through these and then I'm just going to go through some of the, thank you, some of the additional actions that were added in for us to rate. And we'll take a quick break and then come back. Okay? So it's going to be over to you, Janelle.
Thank you. So again, I'm going to kind of back up to what David said about why you do a broader recommendation. So a couple, and I came up with some fun ones. I got a little bit more serious. But the reason you do a broader recommendation is because you never know what the action and the item could be. So an example of recommendation for, say, environmental is that, hey, in the comp plan, you explore ways to protect certain species within the city. So that's a, that's a wonderful recommendation in the comprehensive plan. And then your action, your implementation could be create a policy to prohibit hunting of the purple polka dot muskrat in the city. Say you have, they're purple polka dot now, they used to be striped.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Nancy. It's Jackie. I think that the microphone's kind of fading out, Janelle.
Okay, I will do my best.
And I guess with the music in the background.
Okay, I will turn to the microphone.
I don't know whether there's a way, Janelle, we could turn.
There's some microphones.
You just push the button, you have to hold on to it. So again, another example of, of recommendation that you could find in the comprehensive plan is consider options to increase recreational activities throughout the city. It's very broad, it gives you ideas. But we all know, oh, okay, we want to focus on recreational activities in the city. So options would be hold an annual flower-themed costume contest 5K. You know, people running around as flowers through the streets of Lewis. Or hold a bubble gum, bubble blowing contest. Again, that's how, that's why you get your specifics, because what if somebody doesn't like bubble gum? You know, or they don't want the flowers, they want to be, you know, trees for the, for the 5K for the costume. That's why you put in the broader recreational activities. And then when you come to like what we're doing is, okay, we want to focus more on, okay, we've got an idea, then how do we implement that idea? So you leave the, the recommendation broad because you never know what could come up in the next couple of years for your, for your recommendations. I also have a couple more. And these you actually could kind of, kind of, some of the things we look at and we kind of see in our comprehensive plan is explore work, working with other agencies to address transportation issues. And this is something similar to what we kind of have in the comprehensive plan is we need to coordinate with Delta on the Canary Creek Bridge. So again, we're coordinating with other agencies, but then we have a specific project. Work with the Lewis Byways on the, on master plans because they, they do a lot of master planning for, for the city. Coordinate with the DRVA regarding streets within the cities under their jurisdiction, which would be like Freeman Highway. So how do we work together on that? But that's more specific. And another one is, you know, if we want, and I know this is, we've kind of touched on a little bit, is exploring options to create additional open space within the city. Again, I think we've all recognized, you know, we, open space is important, but how do we do that? You leave the big picture in the comprehensive plan because there are so many different ways to do it. And if you put one of the actual work items in the plan, you are stuck with that. And what if, you know, revise the subdivision code to increase the amount of open space recorded in a new subdivision? Well, we did that, but what if somebody didn't like that? What if, if we, that was the recommendation and we couldn't get that through planning commission? And then council's not going to adopt it because we couldn't get through planning commission? Then people are going to go say, well, we didn't do what the comprehensive plan said. You're in violation of your comprehensive plan. So that's why you do the bigger, broader topic for your recommendation that, that could take different processes and, and ideas for implementation. So again, purchase a specific property for open space or create a policy for when considering properties for purchasing of open space. That's how you implement this recommendation. Those are just, and those are just ideas. You know, if you, if you don't want to hold the bubble gum blowing contest, you know, and you want to have more concerts at Sango Park in the winter, that's something you can look into. But it's all ties back to your overarching big idea of what's in the comprehensive plan. Because what we put in today might, you know, in five years be, you know, completely different. So you want to give yourself that flexibility, as Rich was talking about, is that you want that flexibility to allow, to make those changes to what fits when you're going through and looking at the code.
I think that's very helpful to know, I appreciate those. So our purpose tonight is to cover the areas we identified for action planning. We have your ratings, we'll look at those. And with the ratings, you remember on the, go to the next page. On, on the form at the bottom, we had add other areas here. And we had four additional areas added. Now, for those, we only have the rating of the person who added it. And we want to make sure we have the input of everyone on the LPC. So in a moment, when we take a break, I'm going to ask everyone, Janelle will have a sheet to go, and I'll go through what those four areas are. I'd like you to think and give your rating of them, members of the planning commission. And then we can average them and see how they fit in with the other ones we've already rated as a group. You follow me? You're looking confused.
I can just throw additional items other than what was submitted to us.
Yes, because we gave people, if we missed something, the opportunity to add items. So if we go to the next slide.
Want to go to the next slide or follow with us?
No, just the next slide. So these are the seven items that people, that we had a description of. I don't have it up on this slide, just to make it easier to read what each action area is. And these are the, under the column for importance, the number you're seeing is the average rating that was given when we took into consideration and when we averaged all of the individual ratings from members of the LPC. The column for comments, I entered the ranked order. Okay, so you know, which one came in first place? Well, that was the zoning code, environmental protection regulations. What came in second place? The cleanup of a variety of clauses in the, in the code. What came in third place? Assessing the level of burden on city resources and infrastructure. So if you look at your, the, your rating sheet or the, an early, the slide before this one, you'll see the detailed description of those and what areas of the code get covered. Now, if we go to the next slide, four areas were added as potential areas for action. One is retreat from the sea. The second was not building in the flood plain. The third is traditional neighborhood design. And the fourth is the number of parking spaces required per dwelling unit. And then we have the rating that was given that by the person who, who added it in. But what we want to do is to get all of your ratings. And you've kind of seen how the ratings averaged out on the page before so that we can slide these in to that list of seven. Because if we miss something that's critically important, we want to be able to have it, you know, move up on the list. So we're going to take a break now, so a comfort break or whatever. And Janelle, where do you have your sheet? Okay, so we have a sheet at the end of the table that will show these four. And you just add your rating in there. And if you are on the phone, Janelle, are you having people email you or what would you like them to do?
Email.
Okay, please email, Janelle, your rating on each of these. And you can just say retreat, flood plain, neighborhood design and parking. And we'll know which one you're, you're referring to and give your, your rating next to it. So before we break, are the instructions clear?
So we're going to do that now?
We're going to do that now. That is, the, the person who wrote it in gave their own rating of it. So if you were the person who contributed one of these, don't rate it again here because you only get one vote. So if I had, if I had added retreat from the sea as an area that I thought we should be considering for action, I rated it a two. I, I didn't add it, but that's, I'm trying to explain how.
Yeah, I understand. I guess what I'm looking at is that the lowest average on the broadening, the review of changes to the code is a 2.7. So something that was rated a two, but the person who added it seems.
But maybe other people find it's more important than a two. So it could, its average could move up even though it's, even though it's below, you know, good point. But you're right. Okay? So we're going to do just a five-minute break. That means we're back here at 7:32. And if you could walk over and do your ratings. And hopefully you, if you're on the line, you are emailing in right now.
Yeah.
Matthew Street, yeah, the Matthew Street classic rock. Need more.
And you're inside.
Hey, but yours too, right? We got bigger. No sun, let's have a birthday. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Liam, my nephew.
He's a, he's a fighter. He's 25 years old. He looks like.
Now Nancy, I don't know if you can hear me, it's Jackie. Nancy, Janelle.
There, sorry Jackie. Jackie, did you miss the discussion we just had?
Yes.
Okay. Let me try to give a quick summary and those of you, everyone can correct me if I've missed something. We basically were talking about the first rated, the first ranked action area, which was environmental protection regulations. And Joe questioned whether there, whether there was anything we could do in this area because so many of the regulations sit with the EPA and with other levels of government. And the discussion Nancy said, well, there are sections of the code that cover this. And we, we looked at those areas of the code. And Melanie said that things like storm water management, which is listed in the description, are out of our control. And there was a question as to what contamination of waterways by runoff meant. And I said when we had a discussion on this, someone had raised lawn chemicals and whether something should be in the code around those. Is that a good enough summary for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
So an ideas that you could potentially control is encouragement of different species for grasses. You know, encouraging things other than irrigation for lawns, for, you know, encouragement of the rain barrels to use for, for watering your garden instead of putting in irrigation. Maybe looking at other materials, looking at lot coverage because that could impact the environment because you're using less impervious. Those are things that you could consider as environmental items. Best management practices for stormwater management, the planting of, of certain plants and species, green roofs.
Rain gardens.
So, rain gardens.
So the description written here is not the description that was from the person who made that recommendation?
Sorry, these were ones that came out of our discussion of action planning. And I wrote the descriptions there. So these are not individuals. And basically I was just trying to summarize and link it up with a section of code. So it would be specific what the group would focus on. Just because as soon as you use the word environmental, you know, I think, I agree with you and Joe. We could have very deep, broad discussions about the environment that come down to nothing that we actually have control over.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, so the environmental article nine, the environmental regulations includes the floodplain, the wetlands, the water resources, the source water, drainage, stormwater management, sediment and erosion controls. But are there other things? Woodland protection, you know, other things. Those you could add as a new subsection into that article. So that's some things you can think about. So that's, that's where you can go kind of down the environmental route. I know council has several recommendations from the resiliency committee that they are considering. I mean, will be continuing to discuss. So again, there might be things like David Edgar said that are in the comprehensive plan or maybe even the code that maybe other like council will be discussing. Or maybe it might be a combination between BPW and the city looking at different things.
And we have, you know, we have the tree ordinance.
Yes.
That is under our, that I think all of the work from that.
Yeah, yeah, I would think if, if something's going to come out of that, that would make sense to go into the environmental section of the code.
And I should say at this point, these would be, we're talking about three additional subcommittees to the tree ordinance. So I didn't put tree ordinance on here because we're already focusing on. Do, do we have the results?
Yes, so the results.
A drumroll and.
For floodplain, it came out as 3.6. Retreat came out at 3.6. The traditional neighborhood designs came in at a three and looking at the parking came in at as a two.
Okay. So if we integrate those with the things we already have, number three, there would be a tie. No, no, we still have the same one, two and three.
Let me.
Yeah. But it would mean the next set that we would come to look at.
Yeah, the next.
Knock off three, we move to the next ones on the list.
Yeah, the, no building in the floodplain and considering retreat would then be, they're tied for the next one.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm so glad that those were added in here. I think that that is something that we should and should make strong recommendations on. I just see those as being, you know, we have this NOAA report that came out just a few months ago.
Hey Nancy, could everyone please give some.
Can you speak more loudly into the.
Right into it, unfortunately.
We have this NOAA report that came out just a few months ago, which tagged towns like Lewis and Lewis in particular, depending on the variables that you choose to put into it as having between one or two or three feet of sea level rise, regardless of whether we reduce emissions or not as a, as a nation and as a planet. And so we're going to be dealing with this even if we were beginning to reduce emissions. And thanks to Ukraine and some other issues, we are not. So I just think that it is absolutely essential, manage retreat as a word. No one wants to address, but I think it's, it's important. And I think that not building in the floodplain is going to save a lot of people a lot of money in the long term. Again, not popular, but I think it's something that we need to, as a commission, give good recommendations on and courageous recommendations.
As I look at these and, you know, I think that the first seven areas were very much driven by looking at the code. And the four add-ins really get us into really more forward-looking and at a more strategic level. And this is, I'm just wondering if the retreat from the sea and not building in the floodplain, if these are two that we might want to have a small group think of, are there educational things that we should be doing in the community at this point on those before we move forward on actually trying to, on actually having a, a subcommittee working on them? So that we're ready when we knock the first three off to have more input, more ideas. And in a sense, may make people more aware of what the issues are.
That's, I agree.
Now, we have folks on the phone and I just want to make sure we're on the phone or on Zoom. Are there any comments from Bob or Tom? Bob, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I've heard a lot. I, I think, I think Rick said it well that we're going to see sea level rise or in some fashion. And for us to have a comprehensive plan update, you know, says we should address what we can with that. To me, that's, other than that, you're just moving deck chairs around on the Titanic, to use an old analogy.
Tom, any comments? Okay. I, I know Tom's been having some, some trouble with connectivity, so I think that may be the issue here. So if we go back to this whole set and we now can put them all together and, and we've moved, our, our number fours have now become Retreat from the Sea and Not Building in the Floodplain. And you can add, you know, they're tied at that. And that then makes our tied fives, the fours and the five becomes a six and the six becomes a seven, so. I'm sorry. Traditional neighborhood design becomes a seven and the six becomes an eight. Anyhow, we'll get those in order. We know, we still have the same top three. And I'm interested in hearing from any comments from the planning commission on whether those top three make sense to you? And do we feel good about having those as our, our top three? Joe?
I have a question about the new one, the last one, the number of parking spaces required for dwelling unit. If anybody's ever looked at our list of rental units and should we have a different number of parking spaces required for people who are renting out houses rather than just two per house? Four, do we need six parking spaces for a rental unit? I mean, it's something to coordinate the house with the list of rental units. Let's see if we're under parked. Okay, sorry. Okay, it's just the number of parking spaces for rental units might be different than dwelling units. Something to look at down the road.
Are, are you suggesting that in order to rent out, you can, you can only rent to so many people? If you only have two parking spaces or you?
That might be something that goes on the rental application to have this, you know, this number of parking spaces listed up front to the owner of the building that they have to provide parking spaces for their capacity or only rent to, you know, for people to bring in two cars. That might be a limitation, but that could be on a rental unit. That's probably a city manager item, so.
And what section of the code would that come under, Janelle?
So there's a, there's an off-street parking section of the code. I don't remember it off the top of my head, but it does reference the number of parking spaces required for residential, for apartments, for single family or commercial uses, for institutional uses. So there's a parking section that actually tells you based on, you know, so for every single family house, you have to have two off-street parking spaces. For certain uses, you have to have one parking space for every so many square feet and it changes based on the use.
Okay. But is a rental house considered a commercial one?
No, a rental house is considered a residential structure, but that's again, something that if this, when this action item moves forward, would, could be considered.
Okay, alright.
Now, we have a city commission, a city committee or isn't there currently a group that's talking about Airbnb, etc.?
So there is a short-term rental.
Short-term rental.
Committee looking at the whole topic of short-term rentals. So I'm not sure if they're looking at parking at the moment, but I know they are looking at the entire topic.
It would be an interesting comment, I think, to relate to, to that committee.
Right.
The purpose of this meeting is to come to some conclusion on priorities.
Yeah. Could you repeat what the priorities are Nancy just?
Currently, if you, if we just, and we, you know, if we just go by the numbers, but there's the opportunity as a group for us to, you know, shift a bit if we, if we feel the numbers aren't truly reflective of what we want. Number one would be environmental protection regulations. Number two would be clean up a variety of clauses in the code. And number three would be assess the level of burden on city resources and infrastructure. And I should say, I think the cleanup of a variety of clauses in the code is going to take less time than the other two. So I think we'd be able in not a long period of time to move on to, you know, a fourth, a fourth one, so.
Yeah, and we can tackle small things at a time. Because I know in the planning office, we have a running list of, of topics we'd like to, to clean up. So we constantly are adding to, to our list of, you know, okay, what conflicts do we have in the code? And they don't all have to be tackled at once. It might be easier just to tackle one or two at a time.
What would be number four then, if we were going to, I apologize.
There's a tie for four and that would be Retreat from the Sea and Not Building in the Floodplain. So we'd be able to go on to one or two of those, you know. Yeah, one might even link those together.
Yes. Well, wouldn't floodplain go under environmental protection?
It's quite possible that retreat and floodplain could all be combined into one big thing, but because they were brought out specifically by an individual, I think it's, it's worth the discussion by the commission if you want to roll it into one or leave it as separate items.
I think what makes this something is that all the other items have provisions in the city code that they related to. I'm, I'm struggling with how to assess these.
Well, certainly not building in the floodplain. We have areas of the code around where you can and can't build.
Right.
So. And Retreat from the Sea is a, is really a topic. There currently is nothing in the, in the, in the code around that. And Retreat from the, from the sea actually probably would be broader than, than just the code. It would be, you know, maybe it involves, oftentimes involves the purchase of, of land.
Yeah, or even amendments to the environmental section that would be in support of that endeavor. So certainly an environmental issue, whether they can be combined. It makes sense to me, but I don't, it's hard to know whether you can combine topics until you sort of roll up your sleeves and start digging into them to assess them. Okay.
I, I think it should be a separate issue because it's certainly not currently in the regulations. And I think it's going to be a very controversial issue. I, I really think it should be kept separate.
I, I think it's also one where if you think of the work of the committee and who, the kind of expertise you want to have coming in, the kinds of consultation with the community that you. the kinds of consultation with the community that you'd want. It, to me, it, it is on a different level than the environmental protection regulations that we have right now and making amendments or changes to those.
You know, we, we jumped through hoops about 10, 12 years ago with, to try to improve our CRS rating. And we updated the code so we could build in the floodplain and establish, you know, pre-board heights above mean water levels and stuff like that. So does that whole section have to be thrown out now?
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
So there's an entire, in the environmental regulations, there's an entire section that just talks about floodplains. And so again, if you want to restrict the building in floodplain, that is, that is a very big topic that has been brought up in a number of different subcommittees. The resiliency committee, the sea level rise committee, and a number of the other groups have discussed that. But that doesn't mean you have to, to, to stop doing whatever it is doing. There's many different ways to, to look at the codes. Because right now for floodplain, you've been jumping off point and there's so many different ways to do things that would impact our CRS rating. There's hundreds of different things you.
Oh yeah, little tidbits of stuff.
Yes.
Ignorance question, what is CRS?
It's the community rating systems. So the city has, as part of, it's like an option of the FEMA floodplain. Is that we have gone through the community rating system, seeing that we are doing all of these items. That we're enforcing our floodplain code, that we are doing outreach. We're doing a number of different things to be in compliance with that, those criteria. So that we maintain a number or have the number come down. So again, involve the lower than, actually not. The, the, the lower the number, the negative number, the smaller the number, the better. I think we are currently just went to an eight with, or seven, I think it's seven.
Like that.
Something, it just came down. And what it does is give you a percentage off of your flood insurance.
Yeah, but only if you're in the floodplain, like me, I buy flood insurance and I have two doors
Yeah.
down from the hundred-year flood. I don't get a discount. But yeah, you have to be in the floodplain to get the discount.
That's a FEMA regulation.
Yes.
So, yeah, but we do work, we just went through our, our annual audit or every, other year audit. And we pass, show that we are in compliance with everything that we're doing.
We haven't changed our rating or just in compliance?
Again, this was, it wasn't a full detailed audit, it was just our annual review audit. So I, I'm not sure if that's going to impact our rating. Typically for, to impact the rating, that happens every so many years. It's not, that doesn't happen every year because otherwise you're doing a lot of different steps that we have to be documenting and implementing. So as long as we're in compliance, we're still in compliance with the CRS and that rating. So if we stop doing something or we issue something in error, then we have to fix that.
Do we have a certified floodplain manager, since Robin left?
We are working on it.
Working on getting that.
We are taking, we have several people taking training so we can get scheduled to take the test.
It gets us points too.
It just seems to me that to allow additional building in the floodplain, I'm not sure whether there is even any space for additional building there. It's absolute folly at this point. I mean, it would just be, first of all, why anyone even want to do it? But of course developers want to develop every square inch that they can.
Well, well, I think too, probably when you look at the floodplain, you know, most of Lewis Beach is in the floodplain. So, you know, additional building would include, you know, renovating your garage and, you know, adding two square feet on. I mean, you know, there, there are different levels of building. And that, those are the kinds of things that this committee should really delve into and look at.
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of floodplain that's not on the beach side. There's
Yeah.
a good chunk of floodplain going up, a pilot town, new road. You know, coming closer towards here, there's, there's properties in the floodplain. So there, there's a good chunk of the city that's actually in the floodplain that is not on the beach.
It's about one-third of the city is in the hundred-year floodplain. If you go to 500 years, it's like two-thirds of the city.
Yeah, but well, the one thing, we do not regulate the 500-year.
Yes.
The 0.02%, we, the city does not regulate that, but that is something you could regulate if you so choose.
Well, it looks like we have lots of topics for, for the, for the, the, the second environmental committee that would cover both retreat from the sea and the floodplain, at least. During the group as a whole, so, you know. So tomorrow at our meeting, we'll be looking at moving forward with sending this to city council with the indication that based on our priority setting, the first three that we would address would be environmental protection regulations, the cleanup of codes and the assessing the level of burden on city resources and, and infrastructure. And then once we close out one of our existing committees, we would then address retreat from the sea and not building in the floodplain. And I'm going to merge those together as we send this to city council. Are we in a, in agreement on that? Okay, I don't, this isn't something we need to vote on tonight, but if I'm seeing nodding heads.
Bob is also nodding his head.
Yeah.
So he was in agreement with the.
Good, thank you, Bob.
Bobbing with the music.
You look like you've gotten some sunburn there, Bob. I don't know whether it's the lighting that's on you or that fun time at the.
Some of it's lighting, but I've been out in the sun for a week, so.
Okay.
Are you on Block Island right now?
I am.
Yeah. So I think as we're getting into Block Island discussions, we are coming to the close of this meeting. Unless anyone has anything else to add. If we go to the very last slide, Janelle.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
Make a request that Janelle, this sheet with the numbers and priorities, could you put like number one at the top?
Yeah. We'll reorder them.
Reorder them?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's like, I was very confused with the numbers in the two columns.
Yeah, we'll reorder it for tomorrow and add, it will incorporate the other ones into it too. So it'll all be on one chart. And that would be what we'll be reviewing to send to, to mayor and city council.
Janelle's going to work on that all night tonight, so. Have it ready for tomorrow.
So our next steps, we'll be sending at our meeting tomorrow, approving these to send to mayor and city council for input. And we'll be asking them to do ratings as we did the, the last time we did this. And then this will be coming back to us hopefully for our discussion and action at our August meeting. When I would hope we could, we could identify our next three subcommittees and begin forming those. Okay. That would mean that your names may be down on multiple subcommittees, just, just to, just to let you know, okay? So thank you for giving us advanced warning on that.
Is this the August 10 meeting?
August, August 17.
August 17 is the right.
Regularly.
I'm not here for that.
Okay, that's okay. It's the 17th.
Right, because that's the third one.
And this is, I mean, just for those of you who are here, if you're not, if you know in advance that you cannot attend a meeting, if you could please email Janelle, because as you can see, we started late this evening because we were trying to make sure we had a forum. And if we're ever at the point where we know in advance, we're not going to have a forum, it doesn't make sense for, you know, half of us to come here and find out at that point.
There was music.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, so with this, I don't think we need to ask anyone to move to, to close the meeting. We can just close it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, Ben, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Bye now.
Thank you, and thanks for, thanks for calling in, Bob.
Okay, bye now.